Call the meeting to order, all rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, all members are present, approval of the agenda. We have two items. Seven F, approved resolution 2025-23 approving the minor subdivision. And under reports, we were going to add airport. Is that correct? So it would be six E would be airport report, board report. Does council have any other changes? Vicky, you have anything? Do I have a motion to approve the agenda with those two additions?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Heidi, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Joe. Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five in favor, none against. Approval of the minutes of the March 5th, 2025 regular meeting. All receive them in your packet. Is there any changes or correction? Clarification needed for within those minutes. Hearing nothing, do I have a motion to approve the minutes of the March 5th, 2025 meeting?
So moved.
Motion by Brad, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Scott. Last minute discussion. Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five in favor, none against. This now brings us to our public open forum. Is there anyone here that would like to speak to the council? Is there anyone here that would like to speak to the council? Is there anyone here that would like to speak to the council? Do you want to speak? No, okay. Then our public open forum is now closed. We'll move on to our, we don't have any public hearings. Move on to reports and presentations, police department, monthly report.
Joe, evening, mayor and council. Month report for February of '25. Little bit quieter than the previous year, but it was a cold month. The colder weather slows us down a little bit, too. Some of the highlights are the, some of the higher numbers. Twelve agency assists, I looked at that. Eight of those were in-town agency assists, where we assisted with, maybe eating something. The other ones were crashes during one of those weather events outside, vehicles in a ditch outside the city limits. We had a couple disorderly conduct. Three people got arrested for driving while impaired. One of those was alcohol, two were drug impairments. You see the sixteen, or the, yeah, sixteen ordinance violations, those were winter parking rules, where they actually got citations. Patrols, 168, those patrols were, are continuing to be up, because those are, with our new computer system, we're using those patrols more of a generic when we're out with somebody, but not necessarily something that's criminal. Or like if we're out to school, helping the school or something. The easiest way we, those are patrols, extra patrol, or patrol at school, or patrol up at the hospital. So we're coding those as patrols, because they kind of took away some of our other options from years past. Those are also like citizen contacts also. We don't, we don't have a citizen contact choice in our new CAD system. So that's why, we'll see, you'll continue to see that those patrols will be always pretty high from here on out, until they change the coatings, if they, if they change some coatings. Suspicious people, we had seven suspicious incidents where people called in suspicious into 911. 319 traffic stops and nine welfare checks of different sorts. So yeah, 725 toll for the month. We have been having some issues with the storm sirens, you'll see we have something with this, or the storm sirens coming up. Our last one on Wednesday, our last Wednesday, first Wednesday, we had three that didn't go off. I called Shannon, he came, he went and looked at them. He told me that they're just getting outdated. So then I ended up calling Granite Electronics, who we have a contract with, they do a yearly inspection of them. They came out yesterday, and I think they're even out today, two looking at them, so they, I haven't got a report yet, I haven't heard anything negative. But yeah, we've had two of them consistently that haven't been going off. The one, the fairgrounds has given us issues, that's the one we're going to be looking to replace later, you'll see, you saw in your packet. And then the one out on the east side has been giving us some issues, too. And I think the third one, I think they figured it out, that was up by the golf course. So, I called Granite, I think, so they came out, they put us on top of the list to get the, get them looked at, and they're here yesterday, and I just haven't gotten an email or heard back from them. I'll check with them either later this week or maybe on Monday, to see what they actually all did. Our door project is moving along. Found some issues we got to take care of back in the server room, once those get squared away, we'll be moving pretty quick on that as well. So that's good. And then the only other thing we've been doing is we've just been cracking out our mandatory trainings, as many as we can. And once it warms up, we'll hit our firearms and do our outside stuff. But we've been slotted next week, we're going to be doing some of our lighter use of force classroom stuff, our mandatory postboard things, so we're starting, working on those.
Questions, concerns? Okay, thanks, Joe. Public Works Department, Ben?
Evening, mayor and council. This past month, the outdoor rink was shut down for the season. We did do some maintenance work inside the building, that's all done for the year. And the Olympia was serviced and put into storage for the remainder of the year, so that'll be ready to go for next year. The arena, we had our final event on March 1st. The ice was removed during the week of March 3rd, and the building was turned over to be ready for summer usage now. The Olympia at the arena was also fully serviced and put into storage for the season. The arena ballfield shelter, with the warmer weather, we ordered that ceiling steel and got that all installed and the trim work installed over the exposed rafters in the shelter at the ballfield, so that turned out really nice. We are building eight new picnic tables for that shelter up there that's going to replace the aged ones that are there now, so. Those are gone, the new ones will be put up there, hopefully next week. Splash pad mechanical room is getting some repairs, we had the manifolds removed, and all the bad valves are being replaced, we're doing all this ourselves. There's some new plumbing taking place at the same time to make future valve replacements a lot easier than what we're doing right now. City Hall, we installed the new doorway between the fire hall and city hall. The door will be here in a couple weeks, and that'll get installed by the contractor. Some storm sewer jetting has been taking place with the freezing and thawing weather, just our normal common areas that we always have issues with this time of year. So that's been going pretty well overall. And then we've had a little bit of snow removal the past month, trucks and equipment involved in operational and working well, just minor repairs here and there. So things have been pretty smooth this past month. Any questions I can answer?
Questions?
We're coming up on almost 10 years with the splash pad, is that right?
Uh, yes, yep, it should be 10 years.
Are we out, like, out of warranty on everything that's, that's up there?
Oh, yeah, for sure.
Okay. Is there an expected maintenance schedule or things that we should be looking at replacing on that, or like?
The past few years, we've upped the park maintenance budget to kind of handle some of that stuff, so we've been trying to pick pieces off. Like last year, we rebuilt all the motors, and then this year, that's why we're doing this valve project, so we're getting all the valves replaced that are bad. So we're trying to kind of stay ahead of it, so they don't have a big slug of things, but the features out in the splash pad are probably what's going to be the next big ticket item as those start to, to fail, we'll have to replace those. So those, those will cost a little more money. That's, that's probably the biggest thing coming up out there.
Any other questions, concerns? Thank you, Ben. CBB update, Brad?
Yeah, I did attend the CBB meeting on last Wednesday. The meeting was held at their office here at, on Fourth Street. Went really well, we kind of obviously reviewed minutes, financial report, reviewed multiple financial statements, their financials are very strong, which was very exciting to see. Talked about the lodging tax that was received for 2024. All of the tax, lodging tax from 2024 was, was received. So we kind of got an update on where the city campground and then our, the rentals kind of came through. So it's good to see, there's certainly money coming in there throughout the year that does, does help in taking, doing the, you know, the promotion of the city there. So that was good to see. We also voted in new board positions. Pam Durbin will be the, continue to be the president. Maria Westerbeck will be the vice president, and Stacy Michaels will be the treasurer secretary. So those are all nominated and approved. There was one request for a donation, which was also approved. Talked about the analysis of the CBB and how often it's being clicked on through Google and all the other online activities, so it's good to see it's significantly up from February of 2024. So that was great. And then added one new member, which was approved by the board, and her name is Allison Schletzey. So that was exciting to see another member come on. And then, just a quick update from the chamber, a lot of things happening there. They got the big spring out event starting real soon, and they are up over 300 members as of this point. Any questions?
Questions? Okay?
Alright, thanks.
Then we'll move on to the PUC update, which is myself. Right now, the PUC is working on just the substation that's going up behind the main office. That is the main project right now. We're waiting for some equipment. We found out it's getting delayed until like the end of July, so it's going to last a little longer than what we thought. People have been asking what the poles are and the lines are for and stuff, but that is why, is because of the substation. That substation is about, originally was talked about approximately 12 years ago, when the big push for electric vehicles and everything else like that was happening, they were thinking they were going to need electricity. Well, in the meantime, the city's been growing with the new South Industrial Park, new housing development, and a few, Felling's New Edition and everything. They, they pushed it up, but basically it's about 13 years behind when it was, should have been done. But right now, so they're getting caught up on that point, and if we need to, we'll start looking at probably another one. Because at the growth rate that we see coming, with more businesses and housing and stuff like that, it's only makes sense to start checking into it rather than kicking it down the road and not doing anything until we run into a problem. Also over on Second Street, if you notice, they are now boring in, those wooden poles along the Second Street will be all pulled out, and Charter has agreed now to go in the same trench as us, or basically it's not being going to be trench, it's all going to be bored, the full, full distance, so that is in the process of being done now. So that's about it for right now until we get farther into the summer.
So the substation completion date is looking towards?
It's going to be closer to September.
September?
If everything shows up the way it needs to be, because we were planning on having it all done by July. Now we're not going to get some of the equipment until July, and then after it's in and going, then we need to do all the testing and make sure the circuitry and everything is right. So I would say September. But, you know, that's looking into the future and the way supplies are now, so. Any questions? Otherwise then we will move on to airport board report.
So the airport board met in a rescheduled meeting today. We had rescheduled a little week later because some, a lot of our funding is federal, and we wanted to see if the federal government was still going to be around, so we waited for that, to get that to happen. So that was kind of why we were a little bit late, and that is because of our potential freeze of federal funding for the FAA and the bill funds. If you recall, we talked about bill funds that we were allocated for five years. At the board meeting, that we did have some discussion on that land acquisition grant that we're moving forward, or trying to move forward through, and, and what their recommendation might be, and that'd be a recommendation of the city council at an upcoming meeting. We talked about the box hanger timeline, and also we looked at some bid alternates, because with the way the expenses are going, they said, well, we maybe bid it one way, but have an alternate, so we can choose a less expensive option on a couple of the items. They looked at their capital improvement plan and how much funding we'll have, like, if we do the land acquisition grant and the hanger, how does that fit in our funding plan, and will that enough be, will there be enough funding available? So we're working through that. We see the, the update on the AWAS relocate, our Public Works is the one that's working on that, and then once they have the foundation in, MINDOT will come and move the tower and move the AWAS. And the reason that that has to be relocated is because of that hanger project. Also, we've had some requests for people wanting to build the private hangars on property, and of as least a site out to them. At this point, we're not looking to, to do that right now, a lot of cities have tried it, and they're having, finding that people are just finding, wanting a cheap place to build a shed, and they're not using it for aeronautics use, and then that's a violation of our, of our encumbrances with the airport, and we can't have that. And then also, MINDOT will be coming out, and they're going to help us stake the ag farming limits around the runways. Every few years, we have what's called the 50-10 report, and they look at all things airport, and, and our farming just keeps moving in, and so we have to get it pushed back out again to meet those limits, so. At this time, we don't have any action for you, but we do expect at the next city council meeting to potentially have, ask for approval to go out for bids on that box hanger, so.
Questions?
I just have one, Vicky, do we have a, a waiting list for people to rent hangars or rent space?
We do have a waiting list for the tee hangars. One of the reasons we went with the box hanger was in our, potentially our FBO would move into that new hanger, and then someone in the, the tee hangars would then rent to move in, and we have some that rent like more than one tee hanger, they'd be an option to be in the other box hanger, and then that would open up tee hangars.
Got it.
Right now, the tee hanger, the tee hanger costs are so expensive that we decided not to go that direction. We've had waiting lists in the past, built a tee hanger and a waiting list disappeared because I weren't that serious. So we don't want to get into that again.
Thanks.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, then we'll move on to action items. Seven A, approved resolution 2025-20 awarding the bid for the 2025 improvement project.
So bids were opened for this project, this is the Birch and Pine project, on Thursday, March 6th at 10 a.m. We, I do have the listing of all of the bidders that you have right there, we had nine qualified bidders. The low bidder is Keighley Underground for $4,772,964, and it went all the way up to the high bidder with 6.2 million, so we had between 4.7 or 6.3, that was the range. Keighley Underground is the, the project, or the contractor that did our author's addition project, so they have, we're familiar with them, and we've worked with them in the past. The city engineer did review the bids for completeness, has found them to be in order. If the city council chooses to award the bids, then contracts will be issued, and a notice to proceed will be provided to the contractor. A pre-construction meeting with the contractor, subcontractors, and staff has been preliminary set for April 7th in the AM. The special assessment rule has been updated, we went through it as staff, sent it back to Keith again for a couple other provisions that we wanted him to double check before we send them out. So I would say that possibly like within two weeks, we should be able to send all the property owners a update on what their special assessment will look like. The city's bond council is also updating the proposed financing plan for the project. We'll probably start seeing more about that in May, which isn't that far off anymore, on how, how that process will proceed. So what we're looking for tonight is to approve resolution 2025-20, awarding the bid for the 2025 project to Keighley Underground for $4,772,964.96.
Questions, concerns?
One question I have is, we, we gave the bidders the option to look at the one to two-year construction period for their project, did they indicate their plans, Keighley at all?
They did have, we did advertise it so they would have the option to do that. I don't know, we might want to ask Keith if any of them asked him specifically about.
Well, at this point, we're specifically talking about Keighley, and yes, they intend to, they think they're going to do the vast majority, if not all, of the project in this year. So it's going to be a, a lot of work going on, but they, they think they'll get largely done, it all depends kind of on any delays that could occur. We are meeting tomorrow with Centerpoint Energy, they do plan on moving their, all their gas lines, their gas lines primarily are in the alleys, they're going to move them to the roadways, which wasn't really anticipated, so now we need to make sure that we have a nice coordination with them, so they can be doing their work and not slowing down the city's work. So that's, that's, that process is already started, to try and make sure we have a, have a coordinated game plan with them, so. And project will start, the pre-con, as you said, the 7th, assuming you, you award. In fact, I think they're even going to start with some tree clearing, perhaps late the week before even, so things will get started quickly.
Alright. Any other questions? Although as for now, I will look for a motion to approve resolution 2025-20, awarding the bid to Keighley Underground.
Still moved.
Motion by Heidi, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Joe. Any other discussion or questions? Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carries five in favor, none against. Seven B, approved resolution 2025-21, authorizing bids for reclamation project.
So our capital improvement plan for the 20, and the 2025 budget provides for a full depth reclamation project in '25, the budget is $175,000. We've identified several streets that would be a good option, that do not require a full reconstruct with utilities, and then I did, we did, Ben calculated estimates on recent bids, we kind of gave you a variety there to choose from. 10th Street South from Main to Ash, that would be led by John Weesford. Alex Moore up on Hoboken, but that would include a storm pipe from Fourth to Sinclair Lewis Avenue, and that would be to allow for the future paving of that Fourth Street, which is that gravel up on, up on the hill. We have Park Lane and Parkview Drive, and also Hendrix Drive, and those streets were removed from the reclamation when we did the 2022 project, because they were part of that when we redid Hickman Drive, and so those were pulled, so we added those back in as options. We had some other options that we did consider, and like make the cut for various reasons, Lake Shore Drive along the golf course, because we were looking at potentially needing a waterline. Railroad Avenue that potentially needs sewer, and then, then there's also Center Street up by the Civic Arena, 8th Street South from Getty to Grove Lake and Fairlane Drive. So we have plenty of places that need the full depth reclamation, which is a better option than waiting for it to get so bad it needs full reconstruct, but it is too far gone to do like a seal coating, so they're kind of in that mid, mid-range. So what we're looking for tonight is approved resolution 2025-21, authorizing the solicitation of bids for this 2025 street reclamation, and then please identify which streets it is, and have some discussion here about what your preferred streets are to do that.
Okay, comments, concerns?
I got some questions for, probably for Ben in reference to the streets. Just looking if he kind of has a priority or his, a recommendation from what he feels is, would be your top one or two.
Yeah, I kind of like the Park Lane, Parkview Drive, and Hendrix Drive options. For one reason, it does fall right in nicely with our $175,000 that we budgeted, and we did want to do this three years ago with the 2022 project, so I think now is a good opportunity to get those done, and then that whole section is updated, upgraded, and kind of can fall into the same seal code schedule down the road here. So Hendrix Drive especially, we have new tar on both sides of it, it's not a big stretch, and it's kind of unfortunate that, I have heard from a few of those residents that they would definitely be happy to see that get updated there.
Any other concerns, comments?
My, my thoughts were those, those two streets, for the exact reasons, but it said the total, total amount, and then it keeps everything all in the same ages in that area, and obviously we probably could have done Hendrix as we, we, you know, added the new addition on there and extended that, but, so yeah, I would, I would say getting that all in the same timeline would make sense, from my opinion.
Heidi, you got anything?
Well, obviously I'm on Alex Moore, so I'm gonna probably wish for something else, but no, eventually that'll have to happen. Yeah, I agree, getting that all kind of in the same, the timeline to, for future projects if it needs to happen, that everything's on the same schedule.
To go?
I think traffic wise, 10th Street is probably the most traveled, but I mean, Ben made a good point of putting everything on the same maintenance schedule in that area, so I think, you know, the 10th Street would probably be one to look at here in the near future as well, just because there is a lot of traffic, especially down to Park or Fairlane Drive there, going to coal bars and stuff, that's pretty heavily traveled.
I kind of agree with Ben as far as Park Lane and Parkview Drive and Hendrix, but if, otherwise my next choice would have been Alex Moore. Mainly because if we did Alex Moore, but then Alex Moore, we got to put a storm pipe in, which is part of that price, but then we also got a gravel road that's going west that eventually maybe we could just tie that in and tar that at the same time and do Alex Moore. It all is one part, project instead of two.
One of the last dirt roads right in Sock that are kind of ours to take care of, right?
Well, we got, what, five miles, maybe?
We?
No, I don't think it's five.
Not five miles?
No.
But we've, we've got like-
Seven different sections that we blade, yeah.
Okay.
Right, so, my idea was, is we, while we were going to do this years ago, is eliminate all the gravel in town and get that done, and then we could see the road grader go bye-bye, but use that for our equipment fund, because that's the only reason why we got it, basically, so.
What did you, what did we do for reclamation projects in 2024? Nothing, or anything?
No, we did seal coating.
You did just seal coating?
That's what we used that budget for, yeah.
Okay.
We kind of go back every other year with seal coating and reclamation.
Yeah.
So, well, do I have a motion to approve resolution 2025-21? And author, and name the roads you want to see, or that you want to be part of.
I'll make a motion to approve the Park Lane and the Hendrix.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a second by Brad. Everyone understands the motion, where we're talking about? Okay, any more discussion? As I call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five in favor, none against. Seven C, approved resolution 2025-22, calling for public hearing on improvement.
So following that selection, which you've just selected Park Lane, Parkview Drive, and Hickman, or Hendrix, I should say, a public hearing on the improvement and assessment will be conducted to inform the affected property owners of the project and its assessment of the property. The city's assessment policy states that a full-depth reclamation project or mill and overlay shall be assessed 35% to the adjoining property owners based upon his or her frontage, with those provisions for corners and odd-shaped lots. The attached resolution calls for the hearing to be held on April 16th at the regular city council meeting, mandates advertisement and mailing of notices to the property owners. If the council approves a special meeting for the hearing, that date should be inserted instead. You know, if you want to handle it at a regular meeting, if you think there's going to be a lot of people here and it's going to take a long time, you know, we might want to do a special meeting, but generally on a reclamation, it's not, and so we usually handle those within a regular meeting. So this is resolution 2025-22, calling for the public hearing on the improvement for the project.
Questions, concerns? Do I have a motion to approve resolution 2025-22, calling for the public hearing?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Joe, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Heidi. Any other discussion? Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five in favor, none against. Seven D, approved purchase of rotating siren.
So this is the, the civil defense sirens that Jensen was talking about earlier, we have currently eight in different spaces in town, six of them are the original sirens installed in the early 80s, when we bought them new, used in the early 80s, so we're talking 50-plus year old sirens. The two newer sirens, that's the one here at city hall and one at the old course, they have the battery backup and also cover a much larger area, so the long-range plan over the years has been to reduce the total number- So the long range plan over the years has been to reduce the total number sirens to four of and they would cover that larger area. The two remaining sirens to replace are at the fairgrounds and on Hoboken Hill. When those are replaced, the remaining sirens can be taken out of service. With the siren at the fairgrounds is one that's been giving us trouble. So then a replacement quote was obtained. We budgeted for the replacement in '24. That was continued into '25 because we didn't get it done in '24. The quote for the replacement is $21,638. The public utility, they'll assist with the installation of a pole. So we'll likely need a a bigger, beefier, taller pole with this new siren system. And so we're looking to approve the purchase of the civil defense siren from Granite Electronics for $21,638.
Questions, comments?
Was that in the budget? I mean, is that within the budget that you budgeted for the siren?
The budget was actually 20,000. But within that fund, we also have some other contract labor, so we'll be able to make it work.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions, concerns? Do I have a motion to approve the purchase of the civil defense siren from Granite Electronics?
Still moved.
Motion by Brad, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Joe?
Yep.
Any other discussion? Call the question, all those in favor signify with say an aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, five in favor, none against. Seven E, approve summer seasonal employment.
So with the summer season approaching, the city reached out to the three seasonal employees from 2024 to see if they wished to return for 2025. All three had indicated their desire to return, which is a very welcome for us because they worked out very well. That's Dwayne Wiletsko, Jacob Ravishon and Patrick Gonzalez. And so we have those three summer seasonal employees that we would like to appoint to return as presented.
Questions, comments? Otherwise, do I have a motion to approve the summer seasonal appointments?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Scott.
I'll second.
Second by Heidi. Any other discussion? Call the question, all those in favor signify with say an aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries, five in favor, none against. Seven F, approve resolution 2025 dash 23, approving minor subdivision.
So Bruce Thompson at 321 Eighth Street South has submitted a request for a minor subdivision for property he owns at that same address. The subdivision would split off a portion of his property that is encumbered by a storm pond easement and a nonconforming detached accessory structure. The subdivision would allow the sale of the pond slash accessory building lot. So he has 400 feet of frontage on Eighth Street. And so he'd keep 200 with his house and then the balance with would go and then he wishes to sell that. And I did include a copy of the certificate of survey in your packet, so you can take a look at that. The new parcel meets zoning dimensional standards for for size and area. However, because of the storm pond, the lawn would not lot would not be buildable for a residential structure unless a portion of the pond easement was vacated. So someone at a future date could come in and want that vacated. Another option that the committee had talked about is it is adjacent to like a commercial. So if it was rezoned to like RC, which is like it is across the street, then it would be a conforming property. So if the council were to approve the minor subdivision, we should include the provision in that resolution that indicates that it's not buildable in its current state for a residential structure. So what we're looking is to approve resolution 2025 dash 23, approving that minor subdivision.
Questions, concerns?
Just so I understand, by the nonconforming, you know, detached accessory, that's just because it would be residentially zoned with a detached structure, that's not a dwelling on it, which we don't have.
Right, that's the one issue. But the other issue is wouldn't be able to fit our minimum sized home on that with the setbacks without encroaching into the easement. And if you were out and looked at the property, the it comes off the end of Pine Street and then he's got that pine tree. And that's kind of where it it switches and that's and kind of get a visual of what that's like. Whether there would be room to vacate some of these, but I don't know because I just told him, I said, he understands that someone can't buy that and then build a house as it is. We just want to make sure that that information is conveyed to the buyer.
Any other questions, concerns? Otherwise, do I have a motion to approve resolution 2025 dash 23, approving the minor subdivision?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Heidi, do I have a second?
I'll second it. Is that to include the provision though that it's nonconforming? She has to have that added?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Any other discussion? Call the question, all those in favor signify with say an aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carries, five in favor, none against. Unfinished business, eight A, 2025 Park Trail Project.
This was, you approved us advertising for bids and this is just kind of an update. The solicitation for bid has been published. It's advertised on the city website. Complimentary bid packages requests were sent to companies who have bid in prior years and are known to provide those services. Bid opening is April 10th. We anticipate an award at the April 16th meeting. Keep you up to date on where we're at with that.
Okay, questions about that? Otherwise, we'll move on to Trunk Highway 71 project.
So this is just kind of update you where we're on that. MINDOT has completed the selection process for the design engineer for Trunk Highway 71 project to occur in 2028. Six firms were reviewed for the position based upon qualifications and costs. The next steps following contract execution will include outreach to the city. There's an anticipated opportunity for public engagement in the summer of '25. So we did talk about what public engagement might look like. You know, it may be a pop up at Sinclair Lewis Days. We'll have a meeting here. We'll have maybe a group with just the business owners, the downtown people. But there'll be some opportunities for outreach there as in the coming months. And I'll try to keep everybody well in advance notified of when that will happen. Also related to that has to do with the city's share of the project coupled with. So because of the cost for tying into city streets outside of 71 and what our total cost of the project is going to be, you might want to consider amendment to our maximum sales tax amount to be collected, just to make sure adequate funds are available. The tax collection at the time we did this in 2018 was set at a maximum of $10 million and no more than 25 years. Price increases since then, plus MINDOT's pushed it off. We have those little side streets we need to connect in. We may want to look at increasing that 10 billion. Now, this is going to involve going to legislature, getting a bill written, have it on a referendum. This isn't something we can just do overnight, something that might happen in '26, just something to keep in the back of your mind. If we don't have enough funds through the sales tax, we'll have to go to public utility or or other city funds or bonding, you know, to to make the project happen. I just, there's no anticipation that the final termination date of sales tax will return or will will end or change, I should say. And we're not looking to increase it. It just means that as we accumulate the funds, we can accumulate enough to pay for the project. So something to keep in the back of your head. We'll know more when we get a little bit further into design, so we know for sure what our costs are. And now our costs are all the underground utilities, our share of the stormwater. And of course, they calculate our share based on everything that flows into there off the properties as well. So we'll have a high amount there. And the one thing they don't include in their original estimate is they get that off the off the right away, but then we have to take it somewhere. And what's their participation going to be? And so maybe who has to upgrade our storm because they're going to participate in it. So all those things will have to be decided. We'll try to get some better numbers as we move through the year. Because by January of '26, we're going to have to make a decision if we want to be at the legislature or not. So something to think about unless you got another area that we can fund for it, find the funding money for it.
Any questions about what you just talked about?
Just one comment, I think the current tax rate is 0.5%, correct?
Yep.
And I think what you're talking is we just maintain that, but extend it out, not to increase that tax rate.
It actually, it actually doesn't extend the years.
Right.
Because we were going to have, we were going to terminate it earlier. It just wouldn't terminate as early as we thought because we need to collect a little bit more to make the project cash flow.
Where are we at right now for collection, the amount approximately?
We have in the fund from collections to date about 3.3 million.
And we've had it.
For six years?
Six years?
We started collecting in 2020. Right now, our rate is around 700 a year.
Okay.
It's kind of ramped up. So you can do the math.
Any other questions, concerns, something to think about when you're before you go to bed? We'll move on to new business, communication from city attorney.
So we received notice that our city attorney, Nick Adams, from Pembroke Town will be withdrawing from providing service to the city. With his growing business, he doesn't feel he can adequately provide the specialized services that we need. He's agreed to continue to be general counsel to the city until we find a replacement. Unfortunately, attorneys specializing municipal work are dwindling with many cities utilizing firms in the Twin Cities area. So we, one option we might want to look at is to formalize formally utilize the RFP process to hire a new firm. The other option was I was in contact with the city administrator in Fergus Falls. They've had very good luck with nuisance complaint enforcement with their attorney. So I've been in conversations with both partners in that firm. And they were going to have a little conference together and after we meet tonight to see. They have the option of they would take us on like on a temporary basis to help us continue these nuisance complaints that we've been working on. So we can get those through the court process. But they're also talking about maybe they'd be interested in taking us on as a client. I'm supposed to provide them, you know, how much do we use the city attorney? How much do they need to be in Sock Center? How much would they need to be in St. Cloud because they are in Fergus Falls? Of course, a lot of our stuff is electronic. So it's an option for us to do to to use them temporarily, possibly use them full time, possibly use them temporarily as a interview process or a test. Or we can just go RFP and go out statewide. I mean, it's kind of a couple of things. I think maybe this is probably something the policy committee should look at more in depth. If that might be, I have that as sending a committee. But I would also like to continue my conversations with the attorneys from Fergus Falls to to further that nuisance compliance process in the interim.
Questions, concerns? Otherwise, I, unless someone's got a concern, I'd almost think general consent on both these items.
I think it's great to, if we got somebody that's kind of interested and has experience with the whole nuisance thing, I think that's an important part. And I think having the committee review it for RFP, I think that's, we're going to find that there's just not a lot of, like you mentioned, of not a lot of firms that are taking city cities on, but probably in a metro, we'll find all sorts. So how do we balance that between somebody that far out versus even Fergus Falls the other direction? It's kind of a, but it'll be interesting to see who is interested.
I know one of the things, even if we end up the Twin City items down there, you're going to see double your insurance, your attorney fees.
Absolutely.
And it's going to cost us a lot.
I would see it as better, probably.
Yeah, the using the interim attorney, I would think would be the definite way to go for now because we got some major nuisance problems. We got to keep on and get them taken care of. And then just have the committee look at the RFP process.
Yeah, I'd agree. I think those both make sense to pursue those options.
Concur. General consensus then with both of them?
Yep.
Yep, are good. Okay. Sounds good. Nine B, amendments to the city of Sock Center residential rental code.
We have had a rental code now going on our second, well, we've completed two years now. I think we're going to, we're almost complete of two years of going through the rental code. So we found a lot of things throughout the process that worked and didn't work. And one of the things that we would like to look at amending is it has to do with enforcement procedures as well. And not, it's it's more like timely, you know, getting things done on a timely basis to help the rental inspectors. So I think we probably take that back to the policy committee as well, kind of to review exactly how those procedures work now that we've had it enforced for a couple of years. Sometimes you put things on paper and it looks good, but actually in in the real world, it doesn't work that way. So we'd like to send that committee as well, if you guys are all agree to that.
Concerns?
Can you remind me who's on the policy committee?
I think it's myself and Scott.
Operations, I'm on.
Your operations?
So Brad then is.
It must be.
Is it?
I'm on the operation.
I switch it every year, I can't remember.
You had us going all different directions and I haven't had one yet, meeting yet, so, okay.
As needed.
Yeah, no, definitely go to committee because Kelly's kind of pulling his hair out on some of this stuff. You know, we got the first violation, second violation, third violation, but there's nothing happening to back him up on it. And he's run into a few incidents where he'll say, yeah, everything passes, but you got to put a smoke detector up. Well, he gives them two days to put the smoke detector up and he goes back later and it's still not up, but there's no fine or anything. There are no consequences, so they're just kind of smiling. And so we got to put some more teeth in this as far as I'm concerned, so go from there. So.
I think that policy committee can review it and see what their thoughts are, bring it to us for review and analysis and we'll see how we act.
Okay, sound good? All right. Then we will move on to our consent agenda. We have schedule of claims, unpaid claims of $34,289.73, paid claims of $150 for a total of $34,439.73. February checks, paid claims slash payroll of $698,351.89. We have a gambling application for exempt permit request from the Sock Center trap team for a raffle on June 16th, 2025 at Sock Center High School. Is there any questions or concerns with the consent agenda as presented? Do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Joe, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Scott. Any other last discussion? Call the question, all those in favor signify with say an aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carries, five in favor, none against. Informational items?
The only item I have tonight is the charter spectrum notice for their channel lineup.
Monthly thing.
That's a every meeting thing.
They make a lot of changes. But their franchise agreement requires them to notify us.
Okay, with that, that brings us to the end of our agenda. Do I, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Still move.
Adjourn.
Motion by Brad, second by Scott. Call the question, all those in favor signify with say an aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, five in favor, none against, meeting adjourned.